Oh. I want to present the question, question they asked for the.
Yeah, the question for the.
The answer is. Who gave that?
She didn't give it to me. She just said, she said, she said, "Give it to me." She's gonna give it to me, I don't know what it is.
Of course, they were, they were, they were, they found, okay, found. You know, I see them there.
I know, I know.
Yeah, they got launched up during some. They, 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 they. They're bad. That way, they play a game with them, so they would be able to get the people. They're trying to get. You did it. All that from there, then you go away and then you get. I was in a. He's never been around. Like, came. But they.
Oh, they went to him, they came to him. They like, cause they went to him. No, I know, they went to him to coordinate. No, they coordinated, they coordinated it to him.
They would have to be.
Oh, they did, they did a line. Hey, man.
Hey, how are you?
Oh, doing fine.
Oh.
Good.
See, have you seen, have you seen?
Thank you, sir.
Yeah.
Put that soon on.
Is there another meeting tonight?
Mr. Shaw, come on here.
How are you?
Okay.
Hi.
I'm back, don't you see?
Wednesday.
I have a seat.
Two weeks ago. Driving. And she lost her sight right on. Just like that. Of course, I'm looking at all the stars and the stripes and things like that.
That is, that is.
How's everybody this afternoon?
Captain Shaw, enjoy ourselves.
I'm Buddy Perkins.
And I'm Val Mills.
Nice to meet you.
Very nice to meet you.
Pleasure.
Yeah, how you doing? I'm well, good to see you.
Good to see you. Good luck with a lot of your candidates.
We are.
I'm Buddy Perkins. It would be nice to meet you. John?
We're supposed to give you questions today, right?
Yeah, yeah, I have some, uh, let me go ahead and give you another.
Would you just ask these?
Okay.
Now, we just get everybody going.
Everybody?
Also, I have, got two.
Yeah, I've sent two, posed because she said it.
Okay, that's fair, there you go.
Is this going on?
Okay, um, I think this is the, uh, pre-meeting before the meeting, yes. Let me first off thank, uh, Buddy Perkins, I asked him to also accept some of the minutes, but, uh, the last meeting we can attend, so, uh, he's also on the search of minutes for that forty-five G. Today, we just want to go over preliminary, uh, questions and the whole charade. Uh, if you look on the second page, uh, I, uh, basically, this is very clearly, uh, have already coordinated times for the interview process, we will start on Wednesday, uh, with September fourth, at four o'clock, I just need to coordinate with the, uh, give them a call to see, you know, would it be available during that time. Also, I was tasked at the last meeting to, uh, call to ask the, you know, we have about three other ones currently who do not reside in Selma, Dallas County. So, upon that, I, come on, that's one, upon that meeting.
I'll finish eating.
Okay. After that meeting, uh, I called all three, it was three of them, and, uh, asked them, you know, would it be a problem for them to, if selected, if the faculty, would it be a problem to come into the city or in the county? I said, we give them three months window opportunity to come in, there was no reservation, they said they would be willing to, uh, to come into the city and also to the county if selected. I documented that, the time when I talked with them, and also I have a copy of that, that I would definitely, uh, I would definitely, you know, if anything comes forward, I would definitely have a note, uh. I did explain to them also that we have an ordinance that's already in place, that any department head, you know, have to reside in the city of Selma and also within the, uh, within the county. I'm afraid to say that, but, uh. If we select them, they guaranteed that they would. At our meeting too, I asked for a list of questions to, uh, be submitted, and I had a list of questions that were submitted.
Excellent questions.
Did I ask, did I pass it out from the, uh?
Yeah.
The email?
Yes.
Okay, what I did was, I could buy his questions, uh, along with my questions, so, uh, uh, this question, if you can go ahead and add, I do a few here also, uh, not saying that we're going to ask all the questions, but, uh, I think we need to go ahead and be on unified, first, a convention, a convention of what questions we're gonna ask and everything like that. Currently, we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight questions. I know, I have eight questions that he should make for, and I should make for, and I see, uh, Mr. Jones here, uh, also submitted, so.
These are excellent questions. I'm more interested in questions.
You meant to get some of this for this?
Yeah, I, I, I have, I have, I got, but I get, I get a lot working on this, no problem. Thought I had made it. Yes, I do, yes, I do, yes, I do. Y'all know how to organize, I am.
You certainly do.
But, like I said, that, that's, that's probably gonna be the gist of it, and I think, you know, today, we need to go over how many, how many of the questions, um, that we should probably ask the, uh, the applicants, and also, it would be George Patrick Evans building, uh, and it's open to the public. So, I think it's very important, we engage the public, you know, let them hear, uh, the interviews of the candidates, and not only listen to the interviews of the candidates, but also, I encourage all councilmen to also attend, uh, cause, uh, we're looking at doing the three out of the eight, uh, that we should look, which is going to be based on a scale rate, you know, one to five, and after the interview process is over, we will condense it down to three, three candidates to come before the process. Then after that, during that interview process, that's when we can do a reference check on the three top, uh, candidates that we should get out of there.
Yes, ma'am? Could we do a preliminary check to see if all of these at least live in Dallas County?
We have.
Do they all live in Dallas County?
Well, except for three of them, and the three that do not reside in Dallas County, I called them and asked them whether they'd be willing to move into the city, all three of them confirmed and said yes, and I got them.
Will you let me know who the three are?
Okay. Okay. Yeah, but, uh, these are, like I said, these are excellent questions, uh, I think, you know, uh, I guess we can just, I guess go ahead and condense aside how many that we would, I mean, we feel like we should ask as far as with the questions, uh.
We've got thirty minutes, right?
Thirty minutes, yeah.
Can you ask a lot of questions?
But I just said, thirty minutes increments though, you know, you know, like I said, this is just a rough draft.
Right.
I just said thirty minutes, but as far as with the, with the applicants, I.
I think we've got thirty minutes with the applicants.
If, if you wanna make it longer than that, we can, but this, this is just a rough draft here.
I'm just here to learn.
Okay, yeah, I'm, I'm just asking, you know, it could go, you know, forty-five minutes?
Yeah.
So, I can redo it forty-five, it's already said forty-five minutes.
I think that'd be wise.
Okay.
It's barely time enough to introduce yourself.
Okay, forty-five minutes should be fine. I can just go back and, and do that. It's good to point well, too.
And, um, and this is gonna be two separate days, um, just as the public, um, I'm just realizing it's two separate days, and I never told you that this has a purpose not to take the questions out, since it will be open to the public, then you don't need to take the questions out to the running candidates, uh, since we're not doing them all on the same day.
I think we're looking at a way that we can streamline that, uh.
You might ask one set of questions the first day and the other set of questions the next day.
Yeah, because I'll tell you.
Cause you got to choose.
That's what I'm saying, yeah, so it's gonna be two sets.
Yeah.
It's gonna be two sets, yeah.
We would do the, we would do the promotional exams for the fires, Louis police, uh, if someone didn't think they did well, they would share the questions with someone else, somebody.
Yeah, and like I said, this, this is good, cause like I said, we have a platinum of questions that we can divide in Wednesdays and Thursdays, so, uh, I think that's gonna be very important that we decide, uh, what questions we're gonna use on Wednesdays and what questions we're gonna use on Thursdays.
All of them probably need to get all of the basic questions, like, do you live here now question, basic questions, all of them need to get, and then, I'm, I'm with you, uh, kind of basic, uh, you know, so that people will come.
And that's gonna be one of the things that we definitely, uh, as far as with the preliminary question that we'll be asking, also, uh, a copy of the ordinance where they have to reside, I'm, I'm asking for a copy of the ordinance also, for giving to each other candidates also, and I think, um, it's very important that they sign off on it also, signing off, saying that if you select, you know, you may be living in Selma, Dallas County now, but you may move outside, or you may have to move in, but by, you know, the notification that, uh, you've, you've been made aware, you have agreed to.
And it's documented.
And it's documented. So, that's one thing too, that we're looking at doing also.
Have they filled out applications?
Well, basically, I would say we just basically do it.
At some point in time, they will fill out an application, cause there's probably some really good language on those.
Oh, definitely, because the resume sometimes doesn't help because of the application.
And there's some things on most applications that really protect the employer, that if there's inappropriate or dishonest information on the application, then, uh, some are discharged, is possible.
Yes, ma'am, you have, Ms. Jones?
No, I'm just, I'm marveling at these questions, I think the employer's question, they're so worked over there.
Uh, one thing I always like to get people to kind of zero in on, and we would probably need, uh, a, a precedent question, but I like for people to say, "What is your vision for this job?"
That's right.
That would be the only thing I would add, and the precedent would be, "Do we have a mission statement?"
Oh, definitely.
Do we have a mission statement?
Maybe we should add that on the views right there, unless we forget, you think we should?
Um, I know we have to, um, well, I, I know that department, though.
That's what I mean.
Yeah, the department, I, I, let me speak, I speak to you previously, I assume, and you know what you're doing. I assume, but you know, I might say this, that, you know, I, I would have to find that out. I would definitely find out. But I think you just being coming upon us with this is to go ahead and just, uh, decide questions A, questions B, and question B for, uh, for the days, but I think you can go ahead and, um, decide now what question we want for question A, and what question we want for, for Thursday, and what I can do is go ahead and type them out, and, um, have them for, for Wednesday and Thursday.
I think we want to do that right here, do it for the first day.
Okay. Okay, and then use, this is the second day?
Well, mine is not, not quite as simple as that, and.
But that's okay.
That's D, and this is, she could be, you could be aware of.
But these are, yeah, combination of, because basically what you're looking at, even with these, uh, questions here, uh, I still have questions in with, with this also, just have to go back and, you know, rephrase them, but hand, hands upon hand, I like, I like both said, so I, we probably can just go ahead and use these, uh, for A, and just modify some of this for B. Cause both of them are, if you look at both of them, are intertwined, uh, you know.
Incorporate the visions, your vision is part of it.
Yeah. And I think what we need to do also is, a lot of people are coming, a lot of these about five minutes to give us some information about the sale and move forward with that. I know everybody's on this committee, I was on one committee, I almost went up under this, this table here when they, when they asked, "Do you have any children and stuff?" Ah, you can't ask that!
There are things you can ask.
Yeah, I almost went up on the table, I'm like, wait! Stop, stop the press.
Is there anything in your home situation that you can do to cut?
Yeah, but far as, you know, you know, I had one to ask, you know, how, how many children, are you married?
Please. I've seen people literally talk themselves out of a job they had in their hand, when we ask, "Tell me about yourself," and thirty minutes later, they quit talking. Way higher hand.
Yeah. Very lucrative.
I do think the number of questions should be, I tell you, you have eight questions Wednesday, you have eight questions Thursday, you have eight questions Wednesday, ten questions Thursday.
I have to be consistent. Uh, and I guess what we need to do as a committee also is to look at the salary range, just in case they ask. Yeah, you have to look at that, the salary range.
I think Ms. Jones would help.
Help, help with that, Ms. Jones, you know, with the, with the entry, you know, naturally you would want to pay.
You are about to ask for the first day about there.
What's that?
They are aware of what the salary range, aren't they? What, what's it, what's it posted?
It should be posted.
It should be posted.
Well, they, they, they know what the salary is, so I believe it's a surprise.
It's something on the bulletin that went out.
What was the dollar amount, you know?
Yeah, I thought we were, um.
Well, it should have been graduated, right?
I don't know what I'm saying. Uh-uh, this job is stripped, uh, you just gave the job stripped. It's right supposed to be on that.
They had it up there.
They did?
Yeah, they had it up on their little.
Okay, with you?
On the billboard.
Yeah, cause I know one thing. I don't think they need to start with, no, 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 no. There's a range, a range you'd be in with from fifty to eighty. Fifty to eighty, negotiate, you know, fifty to eighty, uh, but I think basically that, 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 that should be a range, you know, then it would be based on, well, I'm gonna have HR first. Ms. Jones, we're gonna come, we're gonna, we're gonna do a contract with you, get you back in there. I'm playing. But it's gonna be, it's gonna be very important, like I said, and that's why I asked, you know, Ms. Jones, and also Mr. Perkins, who are HR people, to set up on committee, uh, to help us when we deviate to the left, they can push us back to the center and to the right.
What was the position budget at, in the fire department budget?
It was budgeted for fifty, around forty-eight, forty-two, forty-eight, fifty, and then, uh, the fire chief. Sixty-nine, seventy thousand, after the red. So, I think we, so, we are a close proximity, saying fifty to eighty, someone, someone on that range.
We did all this today, so.
Have a seat.
They have it.
They have it.
They have it, they got it, they been there.
They have a share.
Nope, they got it.
Cause, Ms. Jones, you know, you all have, you all, I mean, cause I mean, when I came in in oh-eight, oh-nine, I think all of y'all have a pay plan and, but, thank you for presenting it to us, you guys, I really appreciate it. It made all the difference in the world, because like I said.
Did they ever go through with it completely and pay them off? Pay over? I'm gonna send it at this stop, please.
They have done it all.
Yeah, they almost ran it, they get the report after they. I guess, I guess, you know, the next thing, uh, is, is there anything else that you can think of? I guess, uh, we probably can, committee probably can, uh, meet there Wednesday about three thirty, I have some refreshing waters, so, you know, that we can look at and go over it, but after going back, I would email everybody a list of the questions, A and B questions, so, so everybody can be on one accord, and I guess the best way we can do is just go around, uh, each committee member, ask the question, and, uh, to the, to the advocate, and like I said, I would have a scale of one to five, that we can rank them, that we can rank, you know, the question and also, excuse me, the answer and also the knowledge of the, um, of the applicant.
Could I suggest this?
Yes, sir.
If doing the interview process, that the question would be identified early, I mean, for example, you know going in that you wanna ask so-and-so question number one, and Ms. Jones gonna ask question number two, so it would be like you're stumbling each other trying to ask questions.
It would be synchronized, what, what I'm gonna do is, uh, find out who need what, I'm gonna put your names back there, like if you're one, you, you all would name one of this, follow, follow.
You know, we did that, um, we did that with, um, the treasurer and the department head, but you also had, uh, you had lists of questions in front of the candidate as well, so, as they were asked by specific people, they are actually reading the printed copy of the question as they go along, and, and so, if we have, now, we read the question half a day, you have this list of questions right there, taped to the table at the time.
So, let me look at this, see. Yes, ma'am, I understand.
My purpose was, would be for one person to ask all of the questions, okay? I like that, in one person, just asking all of the questions, like you.
No, I don't think, I, I mean.
No?
In my opinion, this is a, a, a committee, not one person, so I think that committees should be involved all around, and I think identifying upfront who would be asking the question would keep anybody from interjecting, asking the question at the same time, for example, if it not identified that I'm gonna ask this question, you can open your mouth, I can open my mouth at the same time, asking, asking the question, so, I think it should be, everybody should be encouraged to, that's only committed to asking the questions, not just one person.
Okay, then you're going to allow the panel to comment, if they have questions they wanted to ask in regards to what was initially asked, I'll be the first to do that?
Like a follow-up question?
A follow-up question, you're gonna allow follow-up questions?
And then, when we get to the end of, uh, as the interview beginning and close, I mean, because, you know, of course, you may have a thoughts, and, uh, and go from there, but I would stress this out to forty-five minutes, uh, thirty minutes, as I already said, thirty minutes is not an adequate time, I was contemplating between thirty and an hour, so I misranked to forty-five, and what we would do tonight, what I would do tonight, is call each, uh, applicant to let them know their time, uh, we're expecting them, uh, the interview, and what we probably could do is have somebody at the back door, uh, you know, let them come in, you know, uh, have somebody, I guess I had to fix it, I could do just like a thing, cause you don't want another applicant walking in at the beginning of the.
We got that, right, so when you, uh, assign a time, so then we don't forget to add in your breadth between each candidate, y'all, I do three first, five minutes, three, five minutes, whatever that is, so that you're given the right time to call tonight, count your breadth in between each candidate, and what they're gonna gather.
Okay, that, that's a good idea, and what we, what we may have to do, uh, yeah, that's a good idea, but I'd say some four candidates, you know, per day, um, should be, um, hopefully it should go swiftly and efficient.
Yes, sir. Are you not gonna go to hide each candidate, via the mail, send them to notice?
I will, but, uh, I'm gonna follow up first, I'll be with, uh, with, uh, calling me, but I'll follow up with, uh.
I, I can't remember why I was. Put it in the mail, quick, fast, in a hurry, and then, that you're not even established telephone connection with.
Yeah, I, I would follow it up, even if I do establish it, uh, I mean, contacting via phone, I think for a matter of record, you still need to have that right, so I have to draft a little letter and send it to them, it's kinda hard for the secretary.
Yeah, and you don't have one to have, so you have a week, and you know, this is gonna be, and I guess when you say mail, you're talking about snail mail, sometimes it gets too, at a certain date, and sometimes it doesn't, so.
I may do.
You wanna think about that?
Email, email.
Email.
I could do an email, that could be, anyway, whether, you know, snail mail or email, we definitely need that document to.
It's yellow, it's yellow, I can show you.
Definitely.
Yeah, whatever message you're gonna get on top of, because I heard the last time you were saying, um, and, and, and we know that things come, come, and somebody may be having minor surgery, and it's only maybe that you may have to come, and you may have to put it on the fourth, it says the fifth, but they're dealing with schedule like that with eight people, eight gentlemen, um, it's not as easy as being upon them, them saying, okay, cause it's, it's that day away, so you wanna get on it, that call, and then that follow-up, that written document may never got it.
Yeah, I'm trying to say, yeah, especially with, with the call, call, call more than tonight, and then follow up with it.
Yeah, cause they may say, hey, I'm concerned about this.
Yeah, but I'm more concerned by somebody saying, I didn't get the message, see, you had eight candidates, and you, one person don't get their message, and they got, uh, ground to say, you know, y'all have a screw to.
That's right, and that's why that documentation's gonna be so important, and then, I may have to, I mean, as far as with, with the email, I think in some way you can find out whether they read it or not, opened it, I don't know about that.
No, and I mean, send the mail, and I, what I'm saying is for the sake of you getting a schedule that works, that's what I'm talking about, a schedule that works, or more schedules, so, yeah, send a written document, I'm not, I'm propping that out, but a schedule that works for you may not be as simple as you think.
My experience with public hiring is, is very limited, uh, and so I'm picking up on a sensitivity here about a protocol that I'm not accustomed to, so forgive me if I make a mistake, but since I'm going with that thread about that sensitivity, let me ask you this, Mr. President, how did you arrive at the order in which these people will be interviewed?
Uh, basically, just, uh, selective, yes.
Somebody might say, why did you start with the interim fire chief?
That's, that's a rough draft.
Okay.
I told you all it's a rough draft.
I'd go with hypothetical order or random.
That's, that's what I'm saying, at random, I just.
That might indicate a prejudice in favor of the interim.
It is, so I can just, that's, that's a rough draft.
I guess.
After that, what are our, our, our?
Huh?
I agree with him, I think it should be Africa.
Okay.
That would take the uh, the uncertainty out of it. Anybody accused you of showing fanatism, so if you're African, you can't lose.
Right, right. Then I would say, like, have a war.
Yeah, and if the, and if the, that's what chief G is the first basis on B.
Just okay.
It comes in that third.
Okay. Point well, true.
But it won't be.
It won't be. They would, they would be the first.
But the lady also makes a great point, you're gonna expect someone that says, I can't do it that day, or I can't do it that time. So you gotta have some, uh, you gotta have some wiggle room, I call it, to make this work.
Yeah, but that's on them.
And I, but I'm saying, he's gonna, he'll have to, after what they said.
If they can't make the timeline, if they're ecstatic, that's on them.
Yeah, but, but.
We're gonna be.
We're seven days away and then, and.
They know it.
You may know that, but you may also have something, a life event already scheduled, and because we're doing this seven days, we're not doing fourteen days. It won't be seven days because this man is playing secretary, which means he has to draft a letter. He has to give it to whatever person is going to talk to, he has to find a person, because we don't have an administrative system here. He has to find someone available and willing to put the letter for him. Then he has to bring those letters here to get the envelope to get staffed on the meeting. The letters have to make it to the post office, and then his snail mail has to finally deliver them on time. And then y'all say, three people don't live here at all. So we're not really working with seven days.
So I start in line.
Yeah, I, I, you call me, I could go up there.
Okay, I, I, go ahead on this.
We can. That's not my brain.
He called me, I hit the button, I come and get it.
Yeah, but I go ahead on, like I said, change this to forty-five minutes, I'll start calling tonight. And also, like I said, with the letter, let them know, um, and what I can do is, that's why I said I want to call them first. And then if they can confirm that, hey, I can meet in, in that letter, I can interject, you know.
This is the doctor.
Yeah, for our conversation, this is to confirm that your interview date is blah, 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 at blah, blah, blah. Good luck, we look forward to seeing you on that day, something buried you need. And that way, he, 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 cause one of the things that happened, well, I've always been under the impression, I've always, you know, known this for a long time. That any board that you own, you need three very important entities. H R person, attorney, H R person and attorney are two of the ones that you definitely need to keep your. And attorney, and attorney, yeah, those three. H R, attorney, and uh, look at the third one now.
Will the person with technical knowledge about the, about the job?
Yeah, so that's, that's, that's gonna be very important.
Like former fire chief?
Yep. You, you've got some candidates that are already employed by the fire department or by the city. Will they be on the clock during this time? If they were otherwise scheduled to work?
I don't know, that's why I would ask the ones currently, you know, so that's why I'm a coordinated speaker, that's why I'm gonna just talk them. Also, the guy who sent the, um, some of the questions, he was a, he's a former retired firefighter out of Brown.
Yeah, yeah, he is.
So he knows the ins and outs of, then Mr. Peoples here, who was a retired, he's a former fighter, so.
He got it.
So I got it covered.
You were.
Yeah.
That's it, say we've got it covered, except the attorney.
You get H R, turn that. I know, I know it's H R, and I know two people were not attorneys, okay?
I think we can handle that.
Hey, hey, we don't need to use that word turnaround, hit you with it. That's the last thing.
Well, the H R person is gonna, uh, is, is not an attorney, but she, she can be legal person, she's the one that knows her law.
I can't.
She's a law person.
She knows what we can do in both.
Yeah, and I would like to, I would, I would definitely want to thank, you know, Ms. Jones and sir, uh, doing her training here. I feel like I always think we're gonna give him, you know, no. I just leave it. Yeah, I can't say she allowed due process hearing.
She kept us within the law.
She kept us within the law, which, which is very important.
Yeah, and we had a personnel board too.
So what is that? Has there been other courses like this time?
Nope.
Kind of keeps us out of the courtrooms.
You know Ms. Janie Thomas over here?
Yes, I have to say. It's a pleasure to meet everybody.
That's it, thank you, man.
Good job.
I got to go.
You did that, you did that lesson out.
I wish I could do this now.